Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to our June 6, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Meeting called in order. We have a quorum here tonight. Approve the minutes of the April 18, 2018, April 2, 2018, April 16, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. We have eight public hearings tonight. First on agenda, mandatory referral, W-O-W-Z-O-R-O-W abandonment to consider the abandonment as segment for West College Street right-of-way city of Murfreesboro applicant.
Thank you.
Margaret Ann.
Our first public hearing is for you to consider a right-of-way abandonment request, which is also a mandatory referral action. Mandatory referrals on their own don't require a public hearing, but the fact that this is some right-of-way which we're considering dispensing of does require a public hearing, and we have sent notice to the contiguous properties. It is a segment of North Thompson Lane right-of-way that's a part of the on-off ramp onto West College Street. As you can see in the illustration before you, the area is shaded in blue. It does not include any of the paved street surface as we see it today. The applicants for this is the City of Murfreesboro Administration Department. They're requesting to abandon this portion of right-of-way because they believe it's excess, and we have provided a study to you that shows that the departments, various utilities and departments are comfortable with their request. They do ask to maintain some utility easements. They do have some utilities within this area, and that is not uncommon for a right-of-way abandonment request for us if we do move forward with it to retain easements. There are some conditions of approval we'd like to put on this if it's something that you do determine that you want to do. One is that applicants provide a legal description and any necessary documents to quitclaim the deed, and that we get a plat depicting the abandonment and relocation of the subject property, and utility easements be dedicated as needed to accommodate our existing utilities, including water and sewer mains. Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendations, City Council. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Margaret Ann? If not, we're going to open up our public hearing. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is closed. What's the wishes of the council?
Margaret Ann, I know we've got an unnamed road circling this property. Is there any scenario where that becomes a safety concern if there were an accident? I know this may potentially become a parking lot or something if it's turned over to the church. If there's an accident coming in and out on that roadway, is there a safety concern that we don't have an address for that location?
I think that our anticipation is that further to the south across the church property would be a new road constructed, and that this ramp may no longer be needed. I know Mr. Sam Huddleston's been working on the right-of-way abandonment request. Certainly, people walking back and forth across a road that is used, and I think you recognize that, is something that we would want to closely review. It's my understanding, I haven't had direct conversations with the Administration Department, that they would hold on to this until the new road is constructed, and I don't know who's had those conversations, and Mr. Whitaker has. I haven't been given that additional information, but that was what I believe they were intending to do.
Counselman, Mrs. Smith, you mentioned an address. One of the things that we will do is have the area that is abandoned as right-of-way will be created as a lot of record, and so it will have an address. The parking lot, assuming that that does go forward and is constructed there, that there will be a physical, a street address for that parcel, as there are for pretty much all other parcels within the city. There's not today because that entire thing is still right-of-way. It was acquired when Thompson Lane was rebuilt, and no action was ever taken to do anything except to have the entirety be right-of-way for Thompson Lane, including the unnamed road. But there's an area in the center there that we feel is usable property, so we want to eliminate that part as right-of-way will establish it as a lot of record, and then deal with it after that.
Kind of hate to see this place go away because it's one of my favorite places to snowsled. It's got a really good slope to it, and I guess most of this area that we're abandoning is the skid area after you get to the bottom of the hill.
You'll stop more quickly, I would imagine.
We'll save you a spot, Mr. Counselman. How about that? Appreciate you looking out for me, Kurt.
Yep. Is there a motion?
Make a motion when we approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Zoning application for approximately 19.6 acres located along Veterans Parkway to amend PUD, West Lawn PUD Parks Harney investment. Margaret Ann?
Thank you again. This next item is for you to consider an amendment to an existing PUD zoning, planned unit district zoning. It's for property that's shaded in orange on the map before you, and this is known as the West Lawn PUD. It's located along Veterans Parkway, as you can see, and located south of 840, Interstate 840, and just north of Shores Road. This PUD was zoned such several years ago, just before the recession, I think '07, and sat undeveloped for quite some time, or with development start, but stalled. Recently, you've seen some changes on the property, particularly the development of single-family houses. The portion of this PUD located along Veterans Parkway is mostly for commercial uses. At the corner of Veterans Parkway and 840 is a apartment complex, which I believe is under construction. The Planning Commission has reviewed the plan and approved it as such. The request is to change the PUD for a smaller portion of the development. The overall PUD is approximately 207 acres, but the area which they want to change is the hatched area located in the southeast corner, and that is about 19.6 acres. This portion of the PUD is currently identified to be developed with townhomes, with townhouse-style development. The owners or the developers would like to change the PUD so that the portion of this hatched area closest to Veterans Parkway would no longer be townhomes, but would allow commercial uses. I did include in the staff comments a breakdown of the commercial uses proposed to be permitted within this area, and they have identified this area as C4. Pages 42 and 43 in the program book give you a breakdown of the uses permitted, and you may wish to reference those. Pages 40 to 41 are specific area C4, and pages 42 to 43 are the additional area. The part of this property, this 19.6 acres, that's located to the rear closer to Shores Road, are proposing to allow more flexibility. They'd like for you to consider the change to allow either commercial development or age-restricted residential, and I asked them to clarify what exactly they mean by age-restricted residential, since that's not a use identified in our zoning ordinance. We typically like to stick close to our zoning ordinance, since that's something we are familiar and we enforce on a daily basis. And there's some additional information there, as I mentioned, that talks about the age-restricted residential, in that it could look several ways. It could look like a townhome. It could look like a stacked unit, and I believe that the presentation you'll hear in just a few minutes will give you some more details. There are also a list of uses that they're proposing to allow in this area, in addition to the residential, that would include hospital, hotel, independent living, medical offices, offices. Townhomes would still be allowed, single-family attached, detached, and then multifamily stacked flats. The property to the south along Shores Road is in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The Murfreesboro Future Land Use map is shown here, and you can see the portion of West Lawn, which is proposing to change, is identified as multifamily, so the multifamily component would be consistent. The change to allow commercial uses would be something different, so Mr. Gunther with his presentation will need to speak to that. After Mr. Gunther's presentation, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making any recommendation to City Council.
Mr. Vice Chairman, before he starts his presentation, I'm just going to go ahead and note that I will be abstaining from the discussion and the vote on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Gunther?
Very good. Thank you, Margaret Ann, staff, and Planning Commissioners. If we could have our point pulled up. Thank you. Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith. Pleased to be here this evening. We also have Mr. Bob Parks as the applicant developer, if you have any questions for him. I'll kind of walk through this presentation and then, of course, feel interested in hearing the public hearing and respond to any of your questions. So, looking at this site, one of the things Margaret Ann had pointed out was that, you know, this was originally a PUD that was done prior to a lot of development occurring. I think two big changes that we've seen out there are, of course, Veterans Parkway and interchange has come into place. The other thing that we've seen is that we know that the city has a very nice park planned, the West Side Park, on the northeast corner of that intersection. So, those are two big changes I'd like to point out. This is just an image of what has previously been approved, and you'll see, as Ms. Green had pointed out, that our two down in the southeast corner is the parcel that we're describing as proposed to change for commercial. One of the things we think is important with the plan itself is this transportation network that is going in with the area, and as you'll see on this sheet, those black arrows are kind of indicating access into the proposed parcel that we're proposing the changes on. And part of that network change, that transportation network change, involves the extension of Shores Drive onto Veterans Parkway. We think that the proposed commercial use that we're suggesting for this parcel would help facilitate the extension of that road a little faster. We think it's an important connection for the community. This is just a copy of the previous approved master plan showing the 98 townhomes and 5.8 units per acre. That is what we're proposing to change. So, here we have the map of what we are requesting at this time, and you'll see down in that southeast corner, reference to C4 and C5. We think this is a good fit with the surrounding area for several reasons. One, as I mentioned, Veterans Parkway has been built. This is close to the interchange, very well suited for commercial uses that might come into the area. And then also, if you'll notice on this map, what we're proposing with this C4 and C5 is currently right-adjacent to the Commercial 1, Commercial 2, and Commercial 3 parcels that we've already had approved. So, we feel like we're very much in context with what the existing PUD has done. As Ms. Green had mentioned, there's an existing multifamily coming into place, some residential coming into place. A lot of times, that drives additional commercial. This is an overview of specifically what we are proposing for the C4. The C4 portion is closer to Veterans Parkway, a slightly higher intensity. We are proposing the same type of permitted uses as the out-parcels that are existing in the PUD are proposing along Veterans Parkway. At the suggestion of staff, we have removed a few of those permitted uses. That includes liquor stores, cash checking facilities, and a drive-up pickup for photo finishing. So, we have removed those in context of permitted uses, but everything else pretty much matches what you see in the out-parcels already approved for this PUD. This is a maximum height of 70 feet in the C4. And then, we've provided just some basic precedent images of what could be, what could fit in the context of that C4 area. You'll see things like hotels, retail, potential office buildings. I will point out that this entire PUD is still falling under the GDO guidelines, so we are not changing that. The GDO guidelines would apply to this just like they would to the Gateway, and of course, the new design development standards that are in place for Murfreesboro would also apply. The C5 is stepping down in intensity. We're suggesting that there would be hospital, hotel, but also permitted uses of residential, specifically associated with the assisted living, with age-restricted. I think that one important note is that the developers agreed that they would put a non-rental clause, if you will, on residential that would occur in here. They would not be proposing rental as part of the residential mix. And here again, we've just provided some precedent imagery of what we think some of this development may look like. You'll see in the left-hand side, you know, what an assisted living at this scale would typically be. The two-family units residential, and then the townhome residential could be very much in fitting with assisted living, and then just some examples of typical office or medical office space. We want to point out that the proposed buffer that was previously approved with the PUD is to remain. We are not proposing any changes to that with this particular parcel as it relates to the adjacent parcels to the south. So, that buffer that was previously approved would remain in place, and is a pretty substantial screen that would follow the south side of that property. So, that's the end of my presentation, and I'll be available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gunther?
I have one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wade.
Are we, is there a traffic light for that intersection, proposed for that intersection? Mr. Huddleston?
Mr. Wade, Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. As we've looked at the West Lawn Development and Veterans Parkway in this area in general, the realignment of Shores Road, which would also connect with the realigned Blackman Road, we have targeted as a signalized intersection in our signal master planning for this area, as well as the West Lawn Boulevard at Veterans Parkway. We've identified those. There's some interest on the commercial property that's adjacent to this. Can't remember how Mr. Gunther had labeled that, but we do have a working agreement on installation signals at both of those locations with another project, should that project move forward.
Okay. Thank you. There's no questions. We're ready to open up our public hearing. Please state your name and address.
My name's Larry Tipton. I live on 3371 Shores Road, directly across from C5 properties that you're talking about. And originally, this was slated for townhomes, and of course, in a country setting, you know, you can't really fight development or whatever with things like this going on, when you're used to seeing cattle on land like that for years and years and years, and then get a proposal, and it passes for a large development like this, and have two-story townhomes across the road from you. It's kind of hard to accept, but over the years, I have accepted it. And now, you wanting to change that to no telling what, you give me examples of what a building could look like, or what it might be, is not assuring to me when I know what a townhome looks like, and I know what kind of traffic is involved with 98 townhomes. But to have to swallow and eat the fact that now you're wanting to change it to commercial property and not have a specified plan of exactly what's going to be built directly across the street from my house that I've lived in for 34 years and been a Rutherford County resident, and therefore, I am opposed to changing this to commercial property, specifically the C5 area. C4 area is out on Veterans, and, you know, it should be more open to commercial development. I understand that, but this was approved and supposed to have been built out as originally planned and approved as residential, too. And I just wanted to state that I am opposed to commercial, being rezoned to commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. Anyone else?
All right. Mike Tanner. I also live on Shores Road at 3431, and like Mr. Tipton, been there for over 30 years. And we went through all of this about 10 years ago when this subdivision was set to be developed, and of course, it went bankrupt, and nothing happened for years and years. But we were told that that entire area would be a transition area between the more commercial projects that would be going on, on up toward 840, versus the area on the corner of Shores and Veterans that would be a buffer between us as residential and the commercial that was on up the road. And that, as well as some of the realignments of the road, some things like that are being changed from the way it was originally presented, and I know that things do change over time. But I would point out also that there's scores of acres on up Shores Road that are commercial, and it's kind of strange that we would decide to come down on the corner of Shores and Veterans, and that will be the first commercial, to my knowledge, that will be developed along that strip. And I respect the wishes of the Parks and Harney Group, but to change this to commercial, and again, as Larry said, with no real plans of knowing exactly what's going to go in there, I am totally opposed to it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Andrew Hurges. I live on 6216 Birch Tree Drive. I just purchased my home in October of last year. I moved in in December. I have family. I have a four-and-a-half-year-old daughter. I have another daughter on the way. When I purchased the home, what was told to me is that there was going to be residential right there beside me. I'm the third home on Birch Tree, right beside where they're wanting to change this to commercial development. Also know there's a lot of other families that live in that area, live on that street that I live on, and when we purchased it, again, we thought it was going to be residential there. We were told there was going to be a park area that was part of that residential development that was going to be right down the street from us. And when I purchased this home, it was my first major purchase, as I feel like still a young man. And I paid a substantial amount for this home, and I had plans on raising my family here for a pretty good while. Like you said, they have told us that it could be age-restricted living, but they've also told us that it could be a hotel, that it could be several other things. And I don't necessarily like the fact that I was told that it was going to be one thing, that it was going to be residential, something where possibly my children could have more friends, grow up in more of a community lifestyle with a neighborhood, which is what we were looking for, and now it could be a hotel where people from out of town that have no desire to take care of that land, that property, could possibly be coming to on a daily basis. I like the fact that it was addressed about the stoplights. I would really appreciate it if this does go through, that we get some type of stoplight, some type of buffer to keep the traffic, to keep the traffic at a more steady flow there, because I was told not to say this, but my children are outside quite a bit, and I would just like to make sure that they continue to stay safe, and that we do what we can as a community to keep this as a more family-oriented area like I was told it was going to be when I first moved in.
Thank you.
Sir, on multiple occasions during your comments, you made the comment that "I was told by." Who were you told by?
I can't remember who I was talking to on the phone. It was somebody that I'd spoke to when I called up to the city development office. They said that it's not necessarily a good thing to speak about family, because streets aren't something that my children should be playing in anyway.
I'm not talking about that part. I'm talking about the part where you said that you were told that it would be developed as residential, or...
Oh, this was by the lady who sold the home to me from D.R. Horton. I believe it was D.R. Horton, and also, when we looked at the city development plans, what it was approved for at the time that I purchased the home.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we're going to close the hearing. Margaret Ann, or...
Yeah, well, I guess I could just make a couple comments. The applicants or representative may want to as well. Certainly, determining whether the land use is appropriate is the Planning Commission's role here, and you're going to make a recommendation to City Council. And it is a change, particularly for the front portion, and they are leaving the back a little unopened. I know that there are a couple comments saying that there are a lot of unknowns. We don't know the specific user here, but some of the things that we do know, that whoever goes here will have to meet architectural standards that we have in the Gateway Design Overlay District, which is what's located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, some portions of Thompson Lane. And so, the amount of guarantee you have with that is that you know... have with that is that you know that the quality of development will meet those similar guidelines, although specifically what it's looked like, he's absolutely right. There's no specifics. There's just images depicting what they think it might look like. And there were some comments about the transportation, and we don't really know the impact in transportation. And we, of course, don't know the type of use, but there's some things we do know about the transportation network. And one is that whoever develops this property is responsible for building a portion of a three-lane collector that's contiguous with the property, and so you can see what runs along the property. Will be required to be built by whoever develops here. I've worked with in the past a couple of different townhome developers who wanted to construct here. And I don't know their numbers, but I know what they told me is that the price to build half of a three-lane road in the townhomes, they couldn't make it work with the single-family homes. It drove the prices of the townhomes up. And I'm just telling you what they told me. I'm not advocating either way, so that it wasn't something that worked. And so, I think that's why they're looking at changing it now, is because they will be responsible for building that road. And I want you to know that will be their responsibility. And the plan has always indicated that they hope to have a signal here. Of course, I know that our transportation department will look at warrants and timing, but we expect any development on this corner would have to pay for that. Of course, when new signals come in, we require the development to pay for it, as opposed to just the city in most cases where new development is happening. The plan does show this to be townhomes, so that is the case here. I don't know if Mr. Gunther had some additional comments, or want to answer any of the questions that were brought up during the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I think you pointed out something that we do want to emphasize, as I mentioned. We don't know until a site plan comes in exactly what something will look like, but this will meet Gateway criteria. It will meet the new design development standards. So that's, I think, an important thing to note. We are, you know, we are sensitive to the fact that there should be some kind of transition. So when we're saying commercial five, the C five, I want to make sure to point out, we're not asking for the same uses that are proposed along Veterans Parkway. We are asking for the residential component, but also medical office and general office. I think, quite honestly, in response to some of the neighborhood's concern, the applicant is also willing to remove the hotel component. It's really not something that they would try to promote. So I wanted to put that out there as a consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Any comments from staff?
I got to... Well, I'll make a comment. So we've talked about the fact that it's got to meet Gateway guidelines. But the fact of the matter is, is that when, as Mr. Gunther pointed out, when the site plan's got to come back to us, and it's not just a matter of looking at the site plan, we're going to review what the buildings look like also as part of that review, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I think that even though the pattern book outlines what they feel like is going to be portrayed in the development, I mean, we have the ability to hold their feet to the fire with respects to the way this thing's going to look. It's not a matter of it's just a site plan, and where the driveways are going to be, and how many square feet a building's going to be. We are going to have input and say on what the end result look of these buildings are. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that that is something that the planning commission will review at the site plan level.
Now, if this is going to be approved, I do think that we need to go ahead and take them up on the offer of removing the hotel option from the plan, because it, you know, it's a pretty significant difference between having a dentist office across the street from your house that operates during normal business hours, and a hotel that's going to be there twenty-four hours a day, and what goes on with activities at a hotel. So I do think that that would be advantageous to the neighbors as well. So we definitely need to take that off the table.
If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion that we approve, including Mr. Smotherman's comment of removing the hotel as an accepted use for the C five.
Use, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Yes.
One abstention. Motion passes. Zoning application for approximately four-point-nine acres located along Last Cassus Road and Greenland Drive for RS fifteen, RS sixteen to PUD College Point Center, Raji Agaw, applicant. Miss Green.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our third public hearing this evening is for you to consider a request to change zone from RS ten, that's single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, and RM sixteen, which is multifamily residential district with a density of sixteen dwelling units per acre. So from RS ten and RM sixteen to PUD Planned Unit District. And the request is to zone this PUD called the College Point Center PUD. The applicant is Raji Agaw, and I think in the past, you've reviewed some applications from him. It includes several parcels. You can see that it includes five separate parcels that Mr. Agaw owns. And the request is to have a commercial use on the corner. On the corner is property that was owned, the AG property, which years and years in the past was a boarding house. So some people who've been in Murphy's Square for a long time may remember the fact that it was a boarding house that a lot of MTSU students lived at and were able to attend the campus. And then, there were some single-family homes along Old Last Cassus Road. And if you've been on Old Last Cassus Road, you've seen that they've been demolished, including the big white house on the corner. And the plan is to construct a mixed-use type development here with the commercial on the corner and multifamily going up along Old Last Cassus Road. A portion of the property that is already zoned multifamily residential district would allow the apartments, but it would allow the style that you see in the program book with the reduced setback along Old Last Cassus Road. We do have in our comprehensive plan, we have this area identified as a student village. And it does suggest that we look at allowing uses that promote a mixed-use lifestyle center that are more urban in character, that you could walk to, students obviously could walk to, or people who live nearby, with integrated complementary uses that can be used by the public, and then draw visitors from surrounding neighborhoods, that it would have more of an urban-type development. Some multi-story structures are encouraged. And so, you're going to have a presentation with the plan in just a moment. A little unusually, I did, and I will say now, that I'm going to ask you to not approve it tonight, because there's some unanswered questions in the program book that we had. But also, we had a neighborhood meeting on Monday, and there were neighbors who attended who faithfully attend neighborhood meetings for any zoning in this area. And they provide us with some good feedback. And I imagine you'll get some comments tonight. But one of the specific things that I was concerned with is that the book that you have doesn't specifically outline what uses would be allowed. And I think it's very important to have in writing what's allowed. But in this case, some of the neighbors had some uses that concerned them. And so, we have in the past also required a list of prohibited uses. So my suggestion is that they come up with a list of prohibited uses. I know they've been working on it, and there have been some emails, but I want that to be publicly available. I want you to be able to see the use, the list of uses, and also, if you, the residents to see it as well, so they can be aware of that. There was also a request to have a reduction in this PUD for the minimum parking requirements. So we have, we require two-point-two parking spaces for two-bedroom. It's one-point-one based on bedrooms, and then, of course, for four-bedrooms. And so, they wanted to do a little less than that. There have been extensive conversations in the past, early in my career here in Murphy's Square, and I've been here for a long time, about the parking near campus. And we actually changed our parking standards because of the units nearest to campus, because although it may be a one-bedroom unit, the conversation was, well, you maybe have two cars for that one-bedroom unit. Either a friend or a partner would be staying over, so they would be driving vehicles. And so, there was a desire to increase our parking standards, and we did that. So the PUD requests that they, and two-point-two, and two doesn't sound like a difference, but when you multiply that by several units, it does result in some amount of units. So I want some clarification on the parking from you. Are you in favor of allowing some sort of reduction, or would you like their plan to meet our minimum parking standards? I'd like to, Clyde Roundtree worked on this application. He's not here this week, but he does have a representative from Hudson Steel, who would like to go through a presentation with you. If you have questions, of course, I'd be happy to answer them, and I imagine you might. You should conduct a public hearing after Mr. Anix's presentation.
Just before you start, I think, I don't know that we got a program book. I didn't.
I didn't.
They didn't give me paper copies. All I got was electronic copy.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you're right. You didn't.
Okay.
Mr. Halliburton, due to the fact that we do not have the information that we really need for you to make decisions, Ms. Green had asked that you would deny this application. You got two options. You could actually deny it, or since the public hearing was published, you could go ahead and let the public hearing be heard tonight. And at that point, then make a motion to deny it, and then they wouldn't have to reschedule the public hearing. They would have to come back before you, or you could defer, but go ahead with the public hearing, since it was advertised, and people may have shown up tonight. And then, you can defer action until we get the proper information to give you. I do apologize for that, but that was out of our control, and we do not have any way to force people to get the stuff in on the deadline. So unfortunately, we don't have all the information either. So, but I would suggest to go ahead and have the public hearing, just for the people that may have shown up tonight, as so not to inconvenience them. And then, you could defer motion on this.
I think, I kind of agree with what you're saying, Gary, but I also have the concern that they may have different concerns when the program book's made available. And I don't know how they can come up and speak intelligently over what they're opposed to or in favor of without a program book. So I think we should defer this project until the paperwork has been...
I think you still have to have a public hearing. They may choose, applicant may choose to withdraw their application and make another one to have another public hearing. That's probably the route they'll want to go, because if you deny it, they can't come back for a year and a half.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of denying it, but I'm in favor of deferring it, and deferring the public hearing as well, because I don't know how anybody could speak for or against something that we haven't seen the booklet on.
I do think there are people that are here tonight to probably speak on this, that made the effort to come out tonight. I don't know that we just...
And if we do, if we do have, this is just my opinion, if we do hold the public hearing tonight, then I would be for whatever, whenever we hear this again, that we have another public hearing associated with it.
I agree. Do we have someone to speak tonight?
I see some familiar faces, so that's why I suspected...
Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing.
He's going to do a presentation.
Oh, okay.
And Enoch Gerald with Hudson Steel Engineering, Mr. Roundtree, who's got an ailing father, not be able to be here tonight. They did have a neighborhood meeting last Monday night, and I don't know that staff has had time to go through all of the pattern book. Hey, we're in favor of deferring a month until the issues get resolved, and the neighbors get a chance to see everything. We're not opposed to that at all. But since they are here tonight, I think it's wise to let them speak. And I'll go sort of quickly through the pattern book, some of the elements of it, if you, just if you will. Also, I have with me Mr. Brian Oliver, who's the architect for the project. The location of the College Point Center is on Old Last Cassus in Greenland. It's right across the, Old Last Cassus is a traffic signal with the parking lot that goes into the MTSU football, basketball complex. Y'all familiar with the location. So it's an excellent access to MTSU. It's for a student village, it's just geared towards MTSU students, have a place to live. As Ms. Green mentioned, this is recommended in the 2035 plan, so I think what we're proposing is consistent. Also, there's an element of commercial along Greenland Drive that could be a restaurant. And there are some permitted uses in the pattern book. One thing that really wasn't discussed was prohibited uses, and we've gone through some of those. But permitted uses in the commercial area would be a restaurant, a bakery, a barber shop, a clothing store, flower shop, those kind of uses. Some of our prohibited uses that we've proposed are a cash advance store, a kennel, a lumberyard, tattoo parlor, tobacco cigarette, vapor sales, things that would not really be conducive to commercial in the MTSU environment along Greenland. The zoning surrounding the property, there is a residential component along Greenland that probably goes commercial someday. We are going to provide buffers along that residential portion. You know, it's, a lot of this property today is zoned for residential. So we think that we're, you know, within the appropriate zoning for this property to allow. And it's a hundred and ninety-two units, as Ms. Green mentioned, was for the parking. The, just some of these pictures of some surrounding areas, so it'll show where the site is. There's apartments to the east. There's a commercial node to the north of us. There's apartments across the road. So there's a lot of multifamily uses in the area. There is a single-family home next door that probably ends up being commercial one day. You know, Greenland Drive is a five-lane road. Old Last Cassus is three-lane with a center turn lane, traffic signal at the intersection. So there's good access to the property today. The, just a couple more pictures of some of the surrounding and apartments and things in the area. From the site plan standpoint, we do have thirty percent open space provided, more passive kind of open space. There will be pavilion with some outdoor seating kind of things proposed for the area. And then, along the commercial restaurant area, we'd like to see some open air kind of things for that. The parking, Ms. Green mentioned, was that, you know, we're looking at a hundred and ninety-two bedrooms, we're requesting one-point-one spaces per bedroom. And that would be a variance from the ordinance today.
The book they have said one-point-one per bedroom, but the request was to do two, instead of two-point-two for a two-bedroom.
Okay, right. There'd be two-bedroom units. So we are requesting, we can park for two-point-two units per bedroom, and then we can park it for the commercial spaces. So we really wouldn't need a parking variance for this, because it's parked for two-point-two units per, and that is a change. Originally, it was not proposed to have an adequate parking. We're asking for a variance. But we're not asking for a variance for parking now. It's got adequate parking for the two-point-two per bedroom spaces. I'm going to let Mr. Oliver, Brian Oliver, come up, just sort of go over the architecture of the building, if you will.
Architecturally, we've been working with Ms. Green, and have gone back and forth a number of times. I feel like we're getting close, very close hopefully, to having a building that meets all the requirements. Part of the requirements were stoops on the front, and the ability to have the right scale at the street. So we feel like we've hopefully accomplished that.
We got a lot of positive comments about the architecture in the neighborhood meeting. If they speak, they may say something to that. But you might be familiar with what's across the street, and we use that as an example of what not to build. And then, we asked Mr. Oliver to look at East Main Village, and he has looked at that and revised these. And I've sort of really been working with him for a long time, and I appreciate his efforts. I was also concerned with having a detention pond in the front, because that takes away from the walkability and the streetscape. And so, the way this is designed, you don't have a deep detention pond in the front. You actually have the porches, as he mentioned, and the buildings address the street, have wider sidewalks, pauses, those sorts of things. So from what I heard Monday, were more positive things about the architecture, although there were questions about other things.
And I think that's our presentation. And I'm not sure if it's appropriate now that we request a furl, or we wait till after the public hearing, but...
Let's wait till after the public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, let's open up our public hearing. All that want to speak, please come forth. State your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Paul Turpin, and I live on Hanover Street, which is right off of Scotland Drive. Now, right now, there are many, many apartment houses up Last Cassus Road. Now, right now, there are many, many apartment houses up Las Cassas Road. And every morning, half of them turn off Las Cassas Road onto Brown Drive, flip around to Hanover, and turn right onto Scotland to go up into the entrance to the college, the big southern, the south entrance of the college. And this, the traffic flow from this project, and I went to a meeting last night and had a little more information, is going to make that worse. We have so much traffic right now. We have no lights guiding any of that. It's just out of control. And I heard a number of, I think 100-plus units, if you will, with a car and a half with each one. Just trying to remember the rough parts. That, in my opinion, won't work. I've lived there for 20 years, and I've seen this come about. So I would be encouraging the council to have a thorough traffic evaluation and see if this can be really carried out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ben Jamison. I live on Glasgow Drive. And I'm encouraged that we have an opportunity to finally do something on this corner. It's been an eyesore for many, many years. But I would urge the Planning Commission to see a greater vision here. This is the first opportunity we have to do something about this Greenland Drive area. We've got improvements going on on Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and now we have an opportunity to start changing the landscape on Greenland Drive. We need to understand and realize that probably 90% of all visitors that come to Murfreesboro come right there. That's what they see. We can think about every other part of our city, but think about it for just a minute. We've got the boys' state tournament, the girls' state tournament, we've got spring fleeing, we've got MTSU football games, MTSU basketball games, we've got MTSU graduations, where people are coming from out of town to see that. And the families of every single high school graduate from this county are right there on that corner and that parking lot. And it's time we need to start thinking about what do we want Greenland Drive to look like, and what do we want that to be there? We can't do it all at once, but this is the first opportunity that we have to start making a difference on what Greenland Drive looks like between Middle Tennessee Boulevard and Rutherford. And the vision needs to be there if that's what's going to happen, and we're going to continue to have visitors come in right there. So I'm certainly not opposed to this type of development. It's important that what goes in that commercial development is something that we want everyone to see. It's important that the architecture is the kind of architecture that we want it to be, and we want everyone to see when they think about Murfreesboro. Because that's where they're coming, and that's what they're looking at. So consider that as we consider what goes here, because this is our first opportunity to make a change. If some of that other residential property eventually becomes commercial, what's it going to look like? It needs to match this. It needs to be up to that standard. And as things, we get the opportunity to do something between Old Las Cassas and Middle Tennessee. If something ever changes there, we need to still stick to those standards, because that's where our visitors are coming. That's what they're looking at, and that's the Murfreesboro that they know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, let's close our public hearing.
Commissioner Wade and Chairman Wade, I guess Commissioners, I'd like to request that we defer this application for a month to allow us time to address some of the neighbors' concerns.
Alright, thank you. Should we get a motion to defer from the staff or commission?
I'd like a motion to defer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. Mr. Turpin, Mr. Jamison, I just want to point out to you that this isn't the first opportunity we've had. This is, I think, our second opportunity on that particular corner. I know the little quick sack that is being moved and relocated is going to be a tremendous improvement over what was there. And certainly, this house that had been there for many years and was in terrible shape. No matter what we put on this corner, I think it'll look better than what was there. So I think we're making improvements, but we definitely do need to make sure that we take every consideration that we can, because your concern about traffic flow in that area is a genuine one. So we'll follow up on it. Thank you.
And just to confirm, we are saying that we'll have another public hearing at the next meeting that's associated with this?
That's what I heard you say, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Vice Chairman, we will schedule this. It is very unfortunate when we have scheduled a public hearing and people come out. And unfortunately, we don't have any control over, we have deadlines for them to submit information to us. But unfortunately, if they don't, it's out of our control. I do apologize to the people that came out tonight. But I think we did the right thing by allowing them to speak tonight. We will have another opportunity for them to speak at the next. We have worked extensively on that corner in redeveloping that area. There's some other property just down from this that will be hopefully coming through in the near future as well for redevelopment. So the whole face of that area will be changing soon. We've also, just for note, we have looked at that intersection at Old Las Cassas in Greenland and part of this. And just to let you know that the traffic issues are on our mind, and we have asked for additional right-of-way as well to improve that intersection there. So we are also working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Zoning application for approximately 5.1 acres located along Manchester Pike, Maples Farm Drive, to be rezoned from CH to RSA Type 2, Maples Family General Partnership applicant. Mr. Brownlee?
Thank you, Chairman Wade and members of the Planning Commission. Our next public hearing is a rezoning request located at the entrance to the developing Maples Farm subdivision, or the Maples subdivision, excuse me. The Maples was annexed and zoned back in 2014. It's located along the east side of Manchester Pike, just to the south of the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. The two front parcels are zoned commercial highway, and the remainder of the subdivision is split between a variety of single-family zoning classifications, RS 8, RS 10, and RS 12. The subdivision has consistently moved forward over the last several years. Houses are being built in the Maples every month, and it's growing, and it's a very large tract, so it's got a lot more room to grow. Back in 2014, when the property was annexed and zoned, they left those two parcels at the corner. They zoned them for commercial purposes in the hopes that they would fill a needed void for commercial services for this subdivision and the residential areas around this particular subdivision. Well, earlier this year, we met with Ms. Taylor and her engineer, Mr. Taylor. No relation. And they indicated to us that there had been no interest, no interest whatsoever in the purchase of those two parcels at the corner for commercial uses. And so they began to think about what could be the possibilities for those uses, if not commercial, what could be the possibilities? And so they began thinking about the possibility of townhomes as a transition. And so they have requested rezoning of one of the two parcels. It's the 5.1-acre parcel at the northeast corner of the intersection of Maples Farm Drive and Manchester Pike to RSA Type 2. RSA Type 2 is residential, single-family attached with, or suburban townhomes. And it allows a townhome product with a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre. So at 5.1 acres, 12 units per acre would allow a maximum of approximately 60 dwelling units. The RSA Type 2 zone does require a minimum of 75% masonry on each facade, and that could consist of brick, stone, or cementitious siding. And it requires buildings of no fewer than three, but no more than eight units attached to one another. There is a conceptual layout that has been proposed for the townhome development, that they are proposing as a transition from Manchester Pike to the single-family development. Of course, this is conceptual at this time. They're requesting a traditional bulk zoning classification, not a planned development. So if they were to come in and do a different product, you know, there's nothing binding to this. This is just a good faith effort for them to show what their conceptual intentions are at this point, where the property to be rezoned. The surrounding areas, as I mentioned, the single-family area to the Maples Single Family Subdivision, RS 8, 10, and 12, to the east of the subject property. They're not proposing to rezone the commercial highway parcel on the opposite side of Maples Farm Drive. Whitworth Buchanan Middle School is zoned RS 15 to the north. And across Manchester Pike are a variety of single-family residential uses in the unincorporated county, including the Burns Place subdivision. The future land use plan of the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan identifies this parcel as being developed as auto-urban general commercial. The plan describes that classification as most commonly associated with a highway-oriented commercial or business strip, and including such uses as fast-food restaurants, gas stations, and strip shopping centers. The existing CH zone is compatible with the recommendations of the plan. I would say that the recommendation of the plan is probably a combination of a couple of things. One, maybe an identification of a need for commercial services in the area. And two, possibly utilizing the existing zoning that was in place as a guide for the future land use map. So there's a possibility that when the future land use map was drafted, that they saw the existing commercial zoning and used the land use character that most closely approximated the existing zoning. At any rate, Mr. Taylor, representing his client, will need to go over with the Planning Commission, and there's a letter in the application materials, why he feels it's appropriate to deviate from the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan. With that being said, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. But before we do, I'd like to invite Mr. Taylor or Mr. Mulchan. They can fight over who gets to go up there and give a brief introduction to this request.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening. I'm Mulchan SEC. Thank you for your time and consideration of this proposal tonight. As Matthew talked about, Ms. Maples, as she's gone through the development, they've gone through about three years of construction on the single-family portion of the development. The original anticipation was that when they came through with the original rezoning four years ago, was that there was the opportunity potentially, down the road as this property developed out in this corridor of Manchester Pike, developed out over the future time, that there might be an opportunity for a commercial node at the entrance to the development. As she's gone through three years of development, some of the single-family portions, she hasn't seen any interest whatsoever on that. Some factors in that could be the Joby Jackson area around the interchange is gobbling up those commercial opportunities on that side, or the fact that this area is so far out at this point in time that there aren't any commercial applicants out there looking for an opportunity to put something out here at this point in time. So she wanted to look at alternatives as to how to go best about utilizing this portion of the development, and she felt that the next opportunity was to look at some kind of multifamily-type opportunity. As Matthew showed in the diagram on the plan that we presented, was that, you know, we're looking at a transitional-type townhome that's more or less a multifamily character, but a very quaint character on that side, which allows for, you know, all the, at least, essentially what we're looking at today is that the homes themselves would be accessed via a drive behind the homes that would face on the Manchester Pike. So more or less, you're presenting a very good facade element to Manchester Pike. So you're not actually putting any parking or any driveways along the front side of this development, but more or less looking at the opportunity of bringing this as a rear-axis automobile element, but allowing for a good elevational facade character to Manchester Pike on that side. So we're looking at that as being the opportunity. As Matthew talked about, in regards to the zoning itself, is, you know, we're looking at this being the Type 2, so definitely you're going to be looking at the 75% masonry in all four elevations on that side. And our dwelling units per acre is actually, you know, more than half of what's, you know, would be allowed in an RSA Type 2 classification on that side. Part of this too, is at least looking from the concept we presented tonight, is that we're looking at at least 50% open space to go along with this. So, you know, we're looking at a very, you know, we're doing some very dense product, but at the same token, we're also providing very open character in this portion of the development. So as you come in, we're providing a very good, you know, architectural character, but also providing a very green element as well along Manchester Pike on that side. Regards to the land use plan, I think, you know, Matthew did hit a good point in regards to, I think, when the land use plan was drafted, they already saw the opportunity for the land use for a commercial element already there, based on the zoning that was already in place. So I think when the land use plan was drafted, they utilized the existing zoning classification, which was the CH classification, and they just more or less mirrored that into the land use plan based on what was already there. And they saw it as that was a potential opportunity there from a land use standpoint. So I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing in regards to this development.
Any questions? Thank you. We're opening up our public hearing now. Anyone who wants to speak, please come forward.
My name is Troy Lamastis. My wife and I live at 3806 Runyon Cove. We have the most central house that backs up this open lot right now. And we were one of the early homes that was built and bought in the neighborhood with the understanding of that original zoning. My wife and I, and the majority of our neighbors that face that, I'm not trying to speak for them, but we would support that rezoning change away from commercial. We believe it would, you know, improve our, obviously, our home value, but also be a much safer environment for our, you know, our children since our land backs up to it, you know, not having the use of dumpsters and cars that come in and out of there, and to have people, obviously, in front of the neighborhood to have a vested interest in the upkeep, in the quality of the homes, if they are as presented. I think the only concern we would have is if there would be any rental restrictions within those properties, which I don't know has been addressed. But we certainly support that rezoning to be residential, other than commercial that's there right now. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, close our public hearing. Mr. Brownlee?
Chairman Wade, the question that Mr. Lamastis?
Lamastis.
Thanks. So have I, on my last name. He posed the question of whether there would be any rental restrictions. The city would not have any rental restrictions, and I don't know if that's something that Ms. Taylor would, or Mr. Mulchan, speaking for Ms. Taylor, might want to address if that might be something they would put in the restrictions. The restrictions would be private documents, though, that we would not enforce. The RSA 2 zone, I did want to make clear, would not allow for a traditional apartment complex. These would be townhouses, these would be for-sale units. However, the city would not be able to prohibit someone from buying an individual unit and deciding to rent it out, although I don't know if that's something that the owner or developer might be considering.
I confirm with Ms. Taylor, and she said that they'll put in the restrictions that no rentals will be allowed on that in regards to these elements on this side. So these will be strictly for-sale units only. So we'll put that into our restrictions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from commission? How could you prevent a person from purchasing a house and then renting it out?
The city could not. Mr. Ives may wish to speak to whether or not that would be something that the developer could legally do in their covenants. I don't know.
As far as I know, they can legally do that. There's...
There's a variety of views of whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but if they can do it, enforcement, of course, would be up to HOA.
Yeah.
The city wouldn't, would not enforce that if they were to put that in a restrictive covenant. It'd be a private contract, not something that the city would be involved in.
And I guess my other question is, why would we not do a PRD on this as opposed to the RS-a type-two, to give the neighbors more assurance as to what would be being built on this property? I've just, I've got concerns that, you know, this is a good presentation, but there's really nothing that's binding about it that says this is what's going to be built. And, you know, I like where the open spaces are and stuff like that, but there's nothing that guarantees those.
They're actually, we do have, and I didn't mention this in my staff comments, we do have mandatory open space requirements in the RSA type-two zone. There are the minimum architectural requirements with the seventy-five percent minimum masonry on each facade. And then, of course, our design guidelines would come into play, too, that are citywide.
But the layout on this property could be any configuration that they wanted to. So this open space that's protecting the properties further back, I think, they could have something built right in their back door. I mean...
In discussions with Ms. Taylor, the bigger, larger open spaces back there, the reason we didn't take anything, at least in this concept, to go back that way, she was wanting to preserve that as open space as part of the overall development on that side. We, you know, we had options in what we presented to her in regards to the design element, but she said she did not want to take advantage of that large space back there with the residential component. So she's, you know, asked us when doing the concept, whether this is a concept that comes forward at site plan level or not. She, you know, more or less has more or less restricted us from anybody who does a design element on that. She's not going to allow us to go back in that space and utilize that large open space for anything development-wise. So that's why, which we see in this, in this concept, is that you have that larger open space there. And I think, you know, we're also willing to make that commitment that, you know, there would be some kind of setback between the rear property lines of these homes, and then a front, or front and/or rear elevation that would be backing up or fronting towards those homes on the cul-de-sac there on the existing section one of the development itself on that side.
And the site plan, of course, will come back before the planning commission. The planning commission would be able during the site plan review process to scrutinize it for negative impact on the surrounding neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Mulchan. Any more questions?
Chairman, if there's no other questions, the planning commission, I would make the motion to approve this zoning request.
Is that your all staff comments?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
And I'm going to abstain.
Want to abstain? Motion passes.
Annexation Plan of Services petition for approximately thirty-four point eight acres located along St. Andrews Drive and Veterans Parkway, St. Andrews LLC applicant.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Chairman Wade. Our next item is the annexation of property that is proposed to be the new location of the tentatively-named Southwest Elementary School. I don't think that it'll end up being its final name. But I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Linda Gilbert, our superintendent, is in attendance, as well as Assistant Superintendent Mr. Gary Anderson, here representing this application. This is two parts. It's annexation and zoning. The first is for the annexation of the portion of two tracts that are just what the city needs in order to build the new elementary school and the associated roadways located along the east side of St. Andrews Drive and along the north side of Veterans Parkway. And also included is approximately eight hundred feet of St. Andrews Drive right-of-way and approximately twenty-one hundred linear feet of Veterans Parkway right-of-way. So the total study area is thirty-four point eight acres, and that includes twenty-seven point eight acres of a parcel owned by St. Andrews LLC and point seven one acres of a parcel that's owned by Smith Brothers Properties. The property is mostly undeveloped. There are two accessory structures located on the larger parcel. And you'll notice that in the Plan of Services and in the staff comments regarding the Plan of Services, those two accessory structures, there are issues providing fire protection to those two accessory structures. So the fire department has recommended that those two structures either be demolished or adequate fire protection be installed before the effective date of annexation. Up until this point, the applicants have indicated that those two structures will be demolished prior to the effective date of annexation. And I'll look for Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Anderson, or Mr. Gerald to, or Mr. Huddleston to confirm that that will be the case.
Good evening.
Matthew L.
Chairman Wade and members of the planning commission, Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. I think I briefed members of council over the last couple of days about our schedule on this, and we have a bid out currently for the initial grading package, which would include removal of the existing structures. As, as you know, because of our schedule, we'll initiate some of this work while the project's still in the jurisdiction of Rutherford County. We'll be bringing back to this body and to the mayor and council, site plans and development plans for consideration and approval later this year. But the, the two accessory structures will be removed prior to the effective date of the annexation of this property.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. The property itself is contiguous with the existing city limits. As you can tell on the map, if we could pull that map in front of us, it is bordered on both the east, west, and north sides by the existing city limits. We have not yet received annexation petitions from the two affected property owners. The city is currently in negotiations with those property owners, and we anticipate having signed annexation petitions prior to the city council public hearing. So any recommendations of approval by the planning commission tonight would be with the, would have, would bear in mind that we do anticipate receiving those annexation petitions from the property owners before this goes to city council. Plan of Services has been included in the agenda materials before you. According to the engineering department, the annualized cost for the operation and maintenance of the segment of St. Andrews Drive that is proposed to be annexed is $2,000. The city already maintains the segment of Veterans Parkway that we're proposing to annex, so there will be no additional cost to annex that twenty-one hundred linear-foot segment of Veterans Parkway that's currently in the county. I mentioned about the two accessory structures that would need to come down before we affect the annexation of this property. Planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on the annexation of the Plan of Services and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. The zoning request on this property is the next item on the agenda. I'll be happy to answer any questions, as would Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Huddleston, or Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. Bromley. Any comments from the council? Before we open up public hearing? All right, let's open up our public hearing. All who want to speak, please come forward. Public hearing is closed. What's the wishes of the council? Commission?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve? Sir, just staff comments?
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Annexation, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Zoning application for approximately twenty-eight point five acres located along St. Andrews Drive, Veterans Parkway to be zoned. CH simultaneous annexation, CD of Murfreesboro applicant. Mr. Bromley.
Thank you, Chairman Wade. The next item on the agenda is the zoning of the same property. So the map is identical to the one that you previously saw, except it does not include the rights of way. And so all of the two parcels that were, or all of the portions of the two parcels that we're proposing to annex are proposed to be zoned commercial fringe. And as we discussed, the proposed use on the subject property is a new Cillit City Elementary School. The commercial fringe zone allows elementary schools by right. So whereas if this were coming in without a corresponding zoning request simultaneous with annexation, and it came into the city with an interim zoning classification of RS fifteen, a special use permit would be required by the Board of Zoning Appeals. In this case, the commercial fringe zoning would not require the special use permit by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if the zoning, the annexation and the zoning are approved, they'll be moved, they'll be, the next step would be to go straight into the site plan review process with the planning commission. A neighborhood meeting was held on this request on May the 23rd. Several of the residents from the neighboring subdivision, Southern Meadows, to the north, were in attendance and got to hear about the proposal for the new elementary school. It was actually held at Overall Creek Elementary School because the design of the new Southwest Elementary School is proposed to mimic that of Overall Creek Elementary School. So it was a good opportunity for folks to see exactly what was planned on this parcel. To the north, as I mentioned, is the Southern Meadows subdivision, which is zoned PRD, a single-family residential subdivision. There is a, an undeveloped PRD called Glenbrook to the, located directly to the east of the subject property. That was zoned PRD back in 2006, I believe, but never developed. To the west of the subject property, across St. Andrews Drive, is the Kimbra Woods PRD, which is currently under development. There are some larger county, single-family residential parcels to the south of the subject property, as well as the Windwood subdivision, which is zoned RS eight, and a new townhome development that's zoned RM sixteen, and a daycare that's zoned commercial fringe. The comprehensive plan actually recommends that the subject property develop as, in, as suburban neighborhood commercial. So the commercial fringe zoning classification is actually consistent with the recommendations of the future land use map. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation for city council. If you have any questions about the proposed development of the elementary school, the representatives from city schools are here. I'll be happy to answer any questions as well. And Mr. Gerald from Huddleston Steel is here as well, who has been working on the design of the site.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Wade. Plan commission, as Mr. Bromley mentioned, we did have a public meeting on May the 23rd. There was eighteen residences from the neighboring communities there, all positive. The only real question, one lady was concerned about are property values. We're not in the real estate business, but I've never seen the property values. Elementary school's a good neighbor. Being commercial zone, it will be required a fifteen-foot buffer adjacent to the neighborhood. The school will back up towards the Southern Meadows. We're proposing a twenty-foot planted buffer. There's another fifty feet of drainage detention buffer. And then the building itself is about a hundred and fifty feet from the property line. So we've, through the site planning process, which we'll be submitting to planning commission here another month or so, we have taken into consideration the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's really all I have to add, just answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question. So the two parcels that the city is in negotiation with that are south of the area that we're discussing, is the anticipation for those parcels to be commercial fringe also? And if that's the case, is it going to be part of the continuous of the school property? Or if it's commercial fringe, is the city just going to be in a position to control what's developed there?
Yeah, if we could bring the map back up. So what is in the orange color is just what the city is in negotiations to purchase. The remainder of the parcels in question are proposed to be left in the county, and would, the existing owners would retain ownership of those, of the balance of those parcels. They do not have a desire to annex the remainder of their properties right now. I think it's something that they are contemplating in the future, but they do not wish to move forward with that right now. And so what we are considering for annexation and zoning is only what, what we will be purchasing from those landowners. However, I would mention that were they to come forward in the future with a request for commercial fringe, like what the school has requested, the future land use map of the 2035 plan would support that. Of course, that would be subject to the planning commission and city council's decision as to whether or not that would be appropriate.
I just got confused because we were talking about two parcels that we're in negotiation with. This area looks like it's one big parcel.
So, so the majority of the property in, okay, Ms. Green pointed out that I do have the mouse here, which is good. I'm used to being up there and have my, have my finger to write the blue, right, to write with. I wish this was another touchscreen like that. But the majority of the parcel, and I'll outline the parcel here. So the majority of the parcel, of the school property, is what is on this large property here. And then there's about seven-tenths of an acre that the city proposes to purchase from Smith Brothers Properties, and that is just for the construction of a public roadway to lead from the school site, which is back here, back to Veterans Parkway.
I understand now. Okay. I see what you're saying when you say the two parcels. You're talking about the roadway being part of one parcel.
Correct, correct. And I've got, Huddleston Steel has prepared a preliminary layout with the proposed school on it. You know, one thing that I will mention, and what we've learned in, from our, from past situations, is that we don't put a school facility on a major road. And so the school will have its access to future roadways coming in off of St. Andrews Drive and Veterans Parkway so that we don't clog the major arteries. And so the school site would be along the north side of that larger parcel, adjacent to Southern Meadows. There would be one east-west public right-of-way intersecting with St. Andrews Drive, and one north-south public right-of-way intersecting with Veterans Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Gerald. All right, let's open up our public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak, for or against, please come forward. All right, let's close our public hearing. This is the wish of the commission?
Move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Is your second?
Second.
Motion, motion been approved. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Annexation Plan of Service, service and annexation petition for approximately one hundred forty-six point six acres located on Bradyville Pike, Kenneth S. Carter applicant. Mr. Bromley.
Thank you, Chairman Wade. This should look familiar to all of you. Back on March the seventh, the planning commission considered the annexation and zoning of the hundred and thirty-four acre parcel here in blue. As you can, as you can see, this parcel by itself is not currently contiguous with the existing city limits. So one, the way that we had proposed initially to make it contiguous with the city limits was to connect it via the right-of-way of Beale's Road. Planning commission recommended the approval of the annexation and the accompanying zoning request. And then on May the fourth, the city council, or, excuse me, May the third, the city council studied this request and had concerns about annexing Beale's Road, an existing county road, an existing substandard county road, and what costs that might impose upon the city if, if we were to annex Beale's Road. So the city council deferred it at that time. During the public hearing, there was discussion about alternative means of making the subject property contiguous with the city limits. The primary alternative means that was discussed during that meeting was by annexing the right-of-way of Bradyville Pike all the way to the subject property instead of annexing the right-of-way of Beale's Road. The proposed PRD development, which the planning commission recommended for approval, but the city council did not take up after it deferred action on the, on the annexation, does not have any direct access to Beale's Road. So there was no, there was no immediate need to annex the right-of-way of Beale's Road on account of the proposed development on the large parcel on the map before you. So on May the sixteenth, we brought the idea to the planning commission of scheduling a public hearing for this revised study area, connecting the requested parcel with the city limits via the annexation of Bradyville Pike. Pike. And so that is what we bring before you today. The study area has been modified accordingly to include approximately 9,200 linear feet of Bradyville Pike right-of-way, which amounts to 12.5 acres of right-of-way. So in addition, there's the original 134-acre parcel, which is situated along the north side of Bradyville Pike and along the south side of Veale's Road. And there's a, one of our 10-foot strips, and I'll show you that with my mouse. You can see the writing there, 10-foot strip. That was a small strip of the Brady Estates subdivision tract. Brady Estates was, which is currently under development. That 10-foot strip was left out in order to prevent these three parcels from being an island of unincorporated county, surrounded by the city limits. Our legal department has since opined that, that, that we may create, that it's not prohibited to create islands of county in the city limits. So we have included that 10-foot strip to clean up that, the annexation of that tract, so that 10 feet of folks' backyards aren't, aren't in a different jurisdiction than the rest of their lot. A plan of services has been provided in the agenda materials. This property does not have access to sanitary sewer, and is proposed to be served by a step system. In addition, the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department cannot provide fire protection to the existing house and accessory structures, because there's not a fire hydrant in close proximity to the house. So the fire department has, is requiring that prior to the effective date of annexation, a fire hydrant be installed at a location subject to, to the Fire and Rescue Department's approval. And this has been relayed to the, to the applicant. And also, during the city council public hearing, the roadway maintenance costs were discussed, and, and what the cost would be to maintain Veale's Road. Well, as I mentioned, the right-of-way of Veale's Road is not included in this, in this study. The right-of-way of Bradyville Pike is. Bradyville Pike, being a state highway, is actually maintained by the city via a maintenance contract with TDOT. And TDOT will actually fund the city $7,000 annually to maintain this segment of Bradyville Pike. And no additional costs to the city are anticipated to maintain Bradyville Pike. So one advantage of the current study area is the costs of maintaining the proposed right-of-way will be provided to us by TDOT, as opposed to if we annexed Veale's Road, we would be responsible for the maintenance of Veale's Road without any funding from TDOT to maintain Veale's Road, because it's not a state highway. The potential developer has filed a request to have the property zoned PRD. Because the planning commission recommended approval of the PRD, and there are no changes to the PRD, there's no need to revisit the PRD at the planning commission level. So if the planning commission recommends approval of the annexation, then the annexation will catch up, so to speak, with the rezoning, which is kind of hanging out there at, at council right now. And so they'll both be heard in tandem at council, if the planning commission recommends the approval of this revised annexation study area. I will mention that there is a pending rezoning request, and this, this was mentioned at city council. The area in orange is, we heard an annexation and zoning request on that back in 2017. And I mentioned at the city council level that the developer of that tract is attempting to acquire a water easement to serve a proposed development on that property. He has not come back to us and told us that he's ready for second and final reading. And I don't know if and when he will move forward with that. We are just waiting for word from him that he has acquired that easement. But for the time being, that is just, second reading is still pending on that annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this annexation request. And we do need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for city council.
Thank you, Mr. Bromley. Any question?
I have one question. On the original plan, then, did we not have access going out to Veale's Road as opposed to Bradyville Pike? Or did we have both? Or what do we?
The zoning plan has no direct access to Veale's Road. There were, and there were environmental limit, physical limitations on the property, which they met with our transportation and engineering departments, as well as the planning department, to discuss not having direct access, because it's, it's, it's a little bit rugged on the north side of that parcel. What they've done is they've actually stubbed, or they're proposing to stub a street to the undeveloped property to the west, which is more conducive to development than the north side of the, of the parcel that we're considering tonight. So if and when that property to the west develops, then we will have connection to Veale's Road. But with this development, there is no direct connection.
Okay. I remembered us talking about that access. I just was thinking it was out to Veale's Road. I don't know why, but anyway. Yeah. So just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Sure.
Anyone else? Before we open up our public hearing?
I don't know why you're looking at me.
I wasn't looking at you, Mr. Halliburton. Let's open up our public hearing, before Mr. Halliburton has a fit. Anyone who wants to speak for or against, please come forward. Public hearing is now closed. Commission?
I'll move to approve, subject to all staff comment.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion passes. Annexation plan of service and annexation petition for approximately 85.9 acres located along Florence Road, RL Waldron, Waldron Family LTD partnership applicant. Ms. Tomlin.
Good evening. This is an annexation plan of service and a petition for property located east of Florence Road. The total parcels are 85.9 acres, but there are three separate parcels here. The largest being 83.7 acres, .09 acres, and .55 acres. This also includes right-of-way of 830 linear feet of Florence Road. The applicant is the Roy L. Waldron Family Limited Partnership. This is, a portion of this parcel is already in the city to the east. And so you can see the back portion, the purple there, is the area that will be annexed in. This is a companion rezoning with this. It will go to commercial fringe, commercial highway, PRD, RS-6, and RSA-2. And I'll, I'll let Mr. Taylor from SEC give you a deeper explanation of all those things in just a moment. The front portion of that property was a PUD that never developed, and it's just kind of sitting there, the whole thing undeveloped at the moment. You have in front of you the plan of services for the area. There is one change. You all received this concerning the electric. It will be provided by MT-EMC. They have changed their agreements, and EMED and MT-EMC are working out a simpler plan to decide who is going to serve what areas in this area. One other thing I'll point out is the comprehensive plan does show this as auto-urban residential, and that deviates. This request would deviate from that. However, the comprehensive plan did not take into account that there's a new interchange coming out there and a five-lane highway. So it, there is a good reason for that change. And I will let Mr. Taylor make his presentation, if you'd like to do that, prior to the public hearing, I'm assuming.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Taylor, we've been waiting to hear from you.
I could see the anticipation on your face, Chairman Wade. Matt Taylor from SEC. And this property was originally zoned to PUD about 10 years ago. And we stopped the limitations at about 100 acres, because that's where the sewer at the time could serve to. And obviously, this plan is a reaction to the new 2040 major thoroughfare plan that's going, proposing a five-lane road, as well as a new interchange on the I-24. So it's a mixture of commercial, higher-density residential, as well as single-family detached. A lot of the original plan area, the 100 acres, is still the single-family detached, just like it was then, except for I would say it's been upgraded. With that PUD, our minimums were 25% masonry, and the remainder of the homes could be vinyl siding. With the RSA and the RS-6, we're required 75% masonry. The original PUD allowed some of those lots to be as small as 5,500 square feet. Our smallest lot size here will be 6,000 square feet. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Thank you. Any question for Mr. Taylor? If not, let's open up our public hearing. No one? Public hearing is now closed.
Chairman Wade, I didn't want to mention if, if any motion regarding the plan of services could reference the provision to the electric and street lighting that was placed on your, on your tables. I'd much appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Bromley. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this annexation and plan of services and annexation petition with the addition of the electric service and street lighting insert that we got tonight.
Is there a second?
And subject to any and all other staff comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Zoning application for approximately 198 acres along Florence Road to be rezoned from PUD, RS-10, RS-12, and county RM to RSA type to 29.91 acres, RS-6, 58.98 acres, CH 22.26 acres, CF 6832 acres, and PRD, Windwood, Windwoods PRD 0.5, 55 acres, Roy L. Waldron Family LTD partnership applicant. Ms. Tomlin?
Mr. Taylor just gave you an explanation of what's going on there, that it would actually be an upgrade in the zoning. If you have any questions, Eeyore, I can try and answer those for you.
Thank you.
We can open up our public hearing now. Public hearing is closed. Commission? Is there a motion?
The PUD is still the PUD, and everything behind, what are all the different colors? I see, over here. I see. I found it.
We, we did break it down, and this is, and I put this on kind of for comical purposes, as I am wont to do sometimes. But Mr. Whitaker actually had the great idea to break it down into two separate maps, because this, this might have the distinction of being the most confusing map we've ever produced. But there are two separate maps. One that shows the proposed, I mean, and these aren't much better, but the proposed zoning simultaneous with annexation, and then the proposed rezoning. Now, what may make more sense is if I bring up SEC's plan, which shows kind of how those boundaries will fall, not in relation to what the existing zones are. You see the existing Cherry Lane extension going through the property, and that kind of makes, and now the zoning boundaries kind of make more sense. And I'll, I'll show you with the, with the cursor. So here's the Cherry Lane extension. They're proposing commercial highway closest to the proposed interchange, commercial fringe a little bit further in, and a combination of RS-6 and RSA-2, as you go further back. And then right on the, at the intersection of the proposed Cherry Lane extension and Florence Road, commercial fringe. So commercial fringe along Florence, kind of in the heart of the, of the track, single-family detached and single-family attached, transitioning back to commercial as you go back towards the proposed interchange. I hope, I hope that exhibit kind of simplifies things a little bit.
It is confusing, Ms. Jones, because we're annexing property, zoning property, and then rezoning an existing PUD, all in this rezoning. So it, it is confusing, and we were scratching our heads trying to figure out how to present this without confusing you. And I hope we have confused you, so, and you're as confused as we are.
You did a good job.
Sir, is there a motion on, on the floor?
Make a motion that we approve the zoning application with all the colors.
Is there a?
To all staff comments.
Is there a second? So we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Tomlin. Staff reports another business?
I have none, sir.
I have nothing.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.